You're all set.
All right, it's 5:32. Michelle, roll call.
Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. Cologne?
Here.
Mr. Koutou?
Here.
Mrs. Saint-Damond?
Here.
Mr. Di Martino?
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Can we have a motion to go into executive session according to Rhode Island general laws 42464 and 42465 subsection A?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Motion. Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
The other one, over there.
Over there. Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. Cologne?
Here.
Mr. Koutou?
Here.
Mrs. Saint-Damond?
Here.
Mr. Di Martino?
Here.
Great. Can we have a motion to see the executive session minutes, please?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sue. Second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. All right. Discussion, action, school reopening. Karen, it's all yours.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for everybody that's here. Yeah, another special school committee meeting, and obviously our big topic tonight, although we've got a couple of small agenda items as well, is school reopening. So on the heels of the governor's announcement yesterday, I sent out a very brief message last night, just to clarify, because I think the message was a little bit confusing in the governor's choice of words saying that we're going back in full, every person, every day. So I just wanted to clarify that, yes, we are, West Warwick is going back, every person is going to be engaged in going back to school, but just like we've been planning on all summer in three different ways. So there's a lot happening locally right now. We're really refining the last-minute details. There's a lot of details. And again, I'll thank everybody for their patience throughout the summer, because a lot of our planning has depended on us waiting for information or guidance from the state. So thus why it's so late in the game for us to be, you know, finalizing a lot of these details. But we feel great about where we're at. We're still at it, and as soon as we have more information, we're going to roll it out. But what I would like to do tonight, I have a very brief PowerPoint I'd like to show, and I'll just describe a little bit. It's not in detail, but it does give, it does bullet some of the things that we need to know, bullets the things that we're finishing up and we're working on, and it outlines our next steps. So if you will bear with me, oh, before we get started, we don't have an audience of citizens on our agenda tonight, but if you're in the audience or watching and would like to ask a question, what you can do is add your question to the chat on the Google Meet. We won't be able to respond tonight, because that would be a violation of the open meetings laws. But what we will do is I'll save the chat, and we'll respond to your questions tomorrow. Or you can email me directly with your questions tomorrow, and we'll make sure that we get back to you. So we did, even though we didn't have an audience of citizens, so we won't be able to have a dialogue about it tonight. We do want to hear what your concerns are, so we'll welcome any questions that you want to put in the chat. So if you will bear with me for one minute here, as I try to maneuver sharing my screen.
Mrs. Tara Sevich, will there be a link so that parents or teachers, staff could look at this presentation after this evening?
Yes, we'll make sure it's posted to the webpage.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, so again, this is just a short overview of some of the major components, and the topics that I talk about, that there's more information coming, I'll let you know how, what our plan is for that as well in our subcommittee work. We had district administrators and staff, we had both unions on board, parents, students, and we had representation from the school committee and the town council. Now, what the subcommittees did was we put out several surveys, three different rounds, I believe, and we listened to what the community had to say. We listened to concerns and what families' preference was for three different models of instruction. One was the full-distance learning, the second one a hybrid model with a rotation of an A-day, B-day. One day would be in-person, the next day would be distance learning at home. And then if your student needed to be in school more than every other day, four days a week, for some special populations and for some students who needed more days of instruction in person. And this slide is the overall result of all of that work. Our priority is always meeting the needs of our families in a healthy and safe way. And this is what we learned from the surveys, that just like I just outlined, these are the three different scenarios, or models, if you will, that our families indicated that they needed. Again, full distance, the hybrid model, and four days in-person. And with all three models, all students will engage in distance learning on Mondays. So just to talk a little bit about the components of distance learning. Last spring, we were abruptly dropped into distance learning because of what happened with the virus, and there wasn't a lot of time to plan. So I think that our district, like most districts around the state, did the best they could. I think we did very well in some ways, and I also know that there was also other areas that we needed to focus on and develop and pay more attention to as we developed our program. So this year, distance learning will be similar in a lot of ways, but different in some. We will be using Google Classroom, Google Meet, which is our virtual platform. There will be components of independent student work assignments, and we have a very strong focus on our social, emotional learning and well-being of all of our students, whether they're distance learning or in-person or a combination of both. And we're committed to developing our distance learning program. And since the spring, we've had extensive professional development all throughout the summer and will continue. And we're really focusing on, oh, I'm sorry, I went ahead too far. We're really focusing on more face-to-face student engagement this year with our distance learning component. Last year, there were face-to-face virtual opportunities with students. We realized there wasn't as much consistency across the board that we know we need to have. In other words, we need to ensure that kids have opportunities face-to-face virtually with their teacher and the whole class. We need to know, we need, we know we need to have opportunities for small groups with their teacher, face-to-face virtually, as well as one-to-one virtual time with the teacher and students. That's been a big part of our development of our distance learning program. Just a quick note on transportation. There are very strict CDC protocols, again, with health and safety in mind, for numbers of students riding buses. They upped it. It was a little lower. Now they're saying we can have up to 50% capacity on buses. There'll be seating in every other row, and masks will be worn at all times by students and adults on the buses. So several weeks ago, we did a survey for parents and asked what they're, what they planned on doing for transportation. If they needed the bus to pick their child up, if the child would be walking, or if the parent intended to drop their student off. So based on the responses, we're going to do one more outreach to parents this week to see, you know, to fine-tune what the needs are. But anybody who needs transportation will be providing it. So the next two slides are just some high-level bullets about some of the safety measures and protocols that we'll get more into detail about. Social distancing is a big part of our in-person return to school. Our arrival and dismissal procedures will be different. People will be going in one entrance, and at the end of the day at dismissal, will be going out another. In the classroom, there'll be social distancing. In the lunchroom, there'll be social distancing. And even in, at recess on the playground, classrooms of kids need to be 14 feet apart. So there'll even be social distancing on the playground. Cleaning and disinfection will happen throughout the day, overnight, and Mondays will be a deep cleaning day for all buildings. Again, all in accordance with CDC guidance. The latest facilities guidance we've gotten, just a week before our last, was around air quality and ventilation that we received from the Department of Health. There's been several meetings last week and into this week, and there's actually going to be another one at the end of the week regarding what we need in terms of ventilation and airflow. And the big thing, the big takeaway from this conversation, most recently, is air exchange in terms of numbers of time in any given classroom that the air is exchanged. And there's very specific numbers around that. And if your buildings don't meet that, then they give us suggestions on how to increase the air exchange. So it's been a very last-minute update from the Department of Health, but we've been very lucky. Again, as always, property services maintains our buildings always above code and standards. So right from the beginning, our buildings were at code and standard. And with this increased expectation around air quality and ventilation and air exchange, Kenny Townsend and his, and his crew have really paid attention and have made any adjustments that we've needed to make. So we're in very good shape there. Few more things, and we've talked about this already, for in-school safety protocols. Masks must be worn for, worn for all students and staff at all times. There will be mask breaks built into, throughout the day for all levels. We all know if anybody has left, even as adults, had a mask on for any amount of time, it's a very difficult thing to do. So we don't minimize that this is a challenge, and it will be a challenge, but it is a requirement from the Department of Health for us to be back in person. You know, mask breaks outside, you know, are the easy part. If we, on days that are good weather and not too cold, we can get outside for five minutes. But as recent as last week, we've gotten some guidance around mask breaks inside. And what we've learned from the experts is that, picture a classroom, and if it's a bad day, we can't get the kids outside, but we need to have the mask breaks. They said, "We can take masks off in a classroom for up to five minutes as long as there's no talking." So the reason for that is when you talk, that's when the droplets come out. So we've been talking about that in the district in the last couple of days, and we thought maybe that would be a good place and time to weave in some mindfulness work. In other words, a five-minute mindfulness break, where we may play soft music or... So these are the types of things that we're, we're thinking of daily in terms of how do we overcome these challenges, things that are going to be challenges. It's going to be a challenge for people to wear a mask all day, we know that. So we're trying to figure out the best possible ways to build in mask breaks. Classrooms will remain as stable groups as much as possible. And the reason for that is to minimize the exposure to other stable groups and other people. So with that said, a classroom will go to recess as a stable group. They'll stay together, they'll play with their classmates in their classroom group, and each classroom group will be 14 feet apart from any other classroom group on the playground. And again, scheduling comes into play there. So the principals have been working on that as well. When do, when do each classrooms go to their recess break? And the same thing for the cafeteria. Each classroom will go to the cafeteria for the meals, they'll stay with their classroom as the stable group, and each classroom will be 14 feet apart in the cafeteria. Any, any common place, like a cafeteria or a gym, where there's shifts of groups of kids that come in and out, they'll be cleaned in between every time a group, groups of kids come in and out. So the next really important thing that we're learning more about from the state, and the governor addressed it yesterday and today in her press conference, is testing. And the protocol for students and staff, when there's a person who presents with symptoms, a person who tests positive, there's very specific procedures and steps that we'll take in school. The Department of Health has a meeting this Thursday with all superintendents and all principals to go over exactly what they've outlined on paper in the playbook they put out a couple of weeks ago, that locally and all the other districts do have as well, their internal protocols. They're going to meet with us on Thursday to talk us through it, make sure everything's where it needs to be. And then after that, that's when we'll be communicating with families exactly what that's going to look like. But what I can tell you is what we know now is, again, we'll take one, one classroom scenario. If a person tests positive in that classroom, that person obviously was tested, or presents with symptoms, that person will be tested. Anybody who's considered a close contact of that person in that classroom will be tested as well and quarantined accordingly if they need to be. Now, this is, this is important. What the state is considering a close contact, even in a one, one classroom, that's a stable group, is anybody that's been within six feet of the person with symptoms or a positive test for more than 15 minutes. So by definition, that's what the state is considering a close contact. So when there's a positive case, the district's responsibility is we contact the Department of Health right away. They either employ the testing team to come and do the testing, and then they start the contact tracing process that they do, that we've heard about on, on TV and the news for a long time. They'll ask, you know, who that student or staff person has been in contact with, what's their schedule, and then we communicate with parents accordingly. So the protocols that will be, you know, defining in more detail include testing, contact tracing, and quarantine. Lou, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, um, if, that's a little, I can see some people might read into it a little differently. So the fact that we're going to have the students separate by the six feet, if there were, if I were with another classmate and I was separate by the six feet, then that would not fall within those parameters. Just because one student presents or one student gets tested, that doesn't mean that the entire class now...
That's right.
Quarantined and so on and so forth. And I think that's important that I, that you said that. And that's, that's, I just wanted to help clarify so that people don't, because they may, I mean, let me ask you this. If, in fact, they're not, they're with, they're beyond the six-foot parameters, will every student that's in those classes get a call? Probably not, because they're not within those, or how does that work?
Right. So it's going to depend on, if there's a positive, if positive case or symptoms in a classroom, we'll notify people in the classroom that that's the case, and then there'll be a separate notification to the school that there was a positive case in the school. So we, another important piece of this is privacy.
Of course, of course.
But the, the exceptions are, and we will, of course, always leave names out. It's not about, it's more, it's a public health issue. And the exception that allows us to notify the classroom that there's a positive case, or the school there's a positive case, is that fact that it's a public health crisis.
Right. Okay. All right. Yep, thanks.
You're welcome. So this is another really important piece. So students need to be screened every morning before they leave school, leave for school, or get on the bus, or if they're being dropped off before their parents drop them off at school, to see if they have any of the following symptoms. And what parents need to do is log into the parent portal in Aspen and fill out this daily attestation that their child does not have any of these symptoms. For the Department of Health, if your child has any of these symptoms, they're not allowed to come to school that day. You're being asked to keep them home. So, again, principals will be sending out this reminder and information to parents in the upcoming, very shortly in the upcoming days. But this is going to be a really important piece to our controlling any kind of an outbreak, any kind of spread of the, of the illness. No different than us walking around with our masks on every day, that we, you know, we need to do our part in that regard. Just a quick note about food service. So in-person students will receive meals, breakfast and lunch, as they always have in school. And for the distance-learning students, we'll have the same pickup for breakfast and lunch, like we did this past spring and all summer. This, this time it'll be at the Civic Center, and we'll give more information about exactly what time of day that'll, that'll be happening and just the more details. But families can plan on that when their, students are distance learning, that they'll have access to food, just like we did in the spring and over the summer. So just a few next steps, and where we're at right now, in this moment, this week, is that we're finalizing the protocols that I talked about before in terms of the arrival dismissals, what that looks like, and how we're going to deliver it to parents. When something happens in school, when something, somebody presents with symptoms or a positive test, all of those protocols, we're going to review with the principals tomorrow, and then we'll be informing parents very shortly. We're finalizing teacher assignments and student schedules this week. We're getting very close. We hope to have teacher assignments done in the next day or so, and I would be confident in saying by early next week, we'll have student schedules ready. Transportation routes, again, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to give one last check with families to see what their transportation needs are. And as always, those routes will be defined, and then the routes will be posted on our webpage. And the next big layer of communication will be coming from the principals in terms of their building-specific protocols. In other words, at any given school, I'll pick Greenbush, you'll be hearing about what door is going to be the arrival door, what door will be the exit door, what will be the traffic flow for dropping, picking up, picking up kids. Those type of building-specific information pieces, the principals will be forthcoming with over the next week or so. Now we're really down to the, like, really nitty-gritty details. We've got the models, we've got the frameworks, now it's the really, the nitty, nitty-gritty details. So the first day of school will be Monday, September 14th, for all grade levels, pre-K to 12. It is a full-distance learning day. So how we're going to approach that is that, that we're going to use that as an orientation day for all students. In other words, your teachers will be engaging with you virtually, and we'll use that day for a welcome, an introduction with the teacher, your classmates, and opening activities. We'll use that day for a review, review of protocols for the students, for the in-person students, arrival dismissal, what movement around the building will look like. On that note, all of the hallways in every building and stairwells have been marked for one-way traffic. So students are going to need to be oriented about that, and we'll talk about mask wearing as well. The first in-person day for students that are coming to be either four-day-a-week in-person or the hybrid model will be Tuesday, September 15th. And there'll be much more information regarding the 14th forthcoming to parents from your principals and teachers about exactly what that's going to look like. And as always, once we start, we will continue, we are committed to continuing to receiving the most updated guidance from the Department of Health and RIDE. We're going to continue to refine our protocols and processes. This is all new. It's, you know, certainly in-person learning is, is going to look different. School is going to look different in a few different ways, and we've talked about a lot of them tonight. You know, mask wearing being one, movement around the buildings being two. So as we, as we roll out the beginning of school, we're going to keep a keen eye on how things are going, and we will refine as we need to. When we see if something's not working, or we can do it better, then we'll make those adjustments. And we're, we're going to continue to develop our in-person and distance-learning programs. And as always, and most importantly, we're committed to serving our students and families in the safest and healthiest possible way. That's been our priority throughout, and it will continue to be our priority throughout. So, again, that's a lot of, a lot of information quickly and very briefly. Now, if I can stop presenting, just there, did it? Again, we're really down to the nitty-gritty of fine-tuning a lot of the details. So by the end of this week, you'll start to get notifications about, in the next day or so, you should, parents should get a notification about which model they're in per their request. And then, again, early, by early next week, we should have student schedules ready to, for parents to access. So again, if you have any, I don't see any questions yet in the chat. If people are watching on YouTube, feel free to email me with any questions, and we will be sure to get right back to you.
So Karen, I just want to note a couple of things, if I could, please.
Sure.
Yesterday, there was a whole, after the governor's speech, there were a bunch of concern and with respect to the school openings and some questions that families had. I put it out there to say, hey, listen, if anyone has any questions, shoot them to me, because I did know that we didn't have an audience of citizens specific on our agenda. Some people, I wrote to you early this morning, and you shot me back like, I don't know, 20 responses back. And we got those people happy and taken care of. But I just wanted to mention a couple of things that have come up since, so that we can put them on the radar. But I just want the folks to know that we did get the question and that we did present them to you so that tomorrow we can deal with. So one is, I have an IEP student who I don't know if, if four days is going to be an option for him. We've already explained that in your present, in your presentation, but we'll address that again tomorrow. Will teachers meet the kids prior to school start? We have a certain agreement that it may not necessarily be before school, but you're going to set aside some time. You, we can address that tomorrow. Change as far as individuals who wanted to, you know, like, if they chose one thing versus another, we, we, you know, we're going to deal with that question as well. We'll reply to that. How to get Chromebooks. Some parents are concerned about how to get their Chromebooks. We do have an answer for that. That answer is that it's just, it was part of the registration process, and you will be contacted by the individual schools for that. With respect to any particular COVID questions, we're going to rely on DOH and the principals meeting that you're going to have tomorrow, and then that news will be funneled through the kids and directly to the parents prior to opening up. And one last question that I had, which is, my grandson lives with me. He signed up for full day in school. My question is, if for some reason he has to stay home due to a positive case in his pod, will he be able to distance learn for the amount, for that, for that amount of time before he can go back? That's also kind of DOH, but something that you already have your, your, your hands on. So that will be something that we can deal with tomorrow. I'll be sure to email you those questions so that when you reply back, I can get back to the folks on it. But, and so that's that. I think Steve had to step away for a few minutes, and so if there's no other questions with respect to school openings, then we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Anyone? No? Okay. So at this point, we're going to...
Lou, can I interrupt you for one second? Sorry. I just, Superintendent Tara Sevich, you might just want to, to look at the chat. I know Jim said that there were some questions on the YouTube Live page, and they, just to say that, yes, you're going to receive them, and we'll be addressing them.
Yeah. So, yeah, so any, any questions on the YouTube page will be forwarded as well, and we'll be sure to answer those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aubrey.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is discussion slash action for recall bus monitors.
I recommend to the school committee that there be a discussion slash action to recall all of the 11 bus monitors that we put on layoff back in June. Now that we have a plan, we know we're going back, and we're going to, we are going to need transportation. We will need our bus monitors. So I recommend that we recall all 11.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we do that.
So Joe moves. Anyone second, please?
Second.
Second. By Rainey, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
And I just wanted, you know, say a note to the, the bus monitors for, thank you for your patience. You know, like we said back in June, that wasn't an easy decision for us, never an easy, easy thing to have to put somebody on layoff. We know it affects your lives and your family's lives. So, you know, we thank you for your, your patience and look forward to having you on our team.
Also, Karen, thank you for that. But I also like to add that, you know, a lot of districts, when this whole thing broke down, their instant automatic thing was like, hey, you know what? If they want us to bus students, and they got very upset about these things. And because everyone, the uncertainty of everyone, people were like, well, we're going to go, and we're going to put our pickup, you know, 25 miles away. Well, there's no one that would be picked up, and we didn't do that. So to your credit and to the folks that are moving those schedules around, trying to make it happen, thank you.
Great, thanks, Louie.
Yep, so the next item is item 10. It says discussion, Westworld Teacher Alliance contract supports.
Great, thanks. I recommend to the school committee there be a discussion regarding the Westworld Teacher Alliance and the contract supports. As I've said all along, both unions have been very helpful. The Teacher Alliance has, from the get-go, offered to be flexible, partner with us, collaborate with us. And to the extent to which the Teachers Alliance has offered flexibility with the contract is allowing us to do what we're doing. Not be able to offer the three different models that we have for families that, again, based on survey, that they need, need for the child or for their family circumstances or what, what have you. And it's, it's with the agreement and flexibility from the contract that the Teacher Reli- Teachers Alliance has afforded us that's allowing that. So I just want to, Sean Doyle is here with us, president of the Teachers Alliance, and I just want, on behalf of the district, thank you, Sean, and the Teachers Alliance, for everything you're doing to help us serve our families.
Oh, we absolutely appreciate you recognizing that, Karen. I just wanted to also update the school committee from our perspective. We have contract language relating to working conditions and scheduling that just makes a lot of sense from an employee's perspective, but also an employer's perspective in most cases, as well as kids. A lot of the things that we negotiate support kids and families too. That said, a lot of that language, we're finding we need to make some minor, minor changes to it to support the current conditions. And anything that we're looking at to make a change or a temporary waiver with is rarely related to supporting first health and safety and second instruction under COVID conditions. So it, it's not that the contract language isn't necessary in general, it's that these are different times. The district has demonstrated to us, the school committee, the superintendent, administrators, that health and safety will be a primary consideration for children and for adults. And we want to respond in kind and make sure that we're supporting that to the extent possible with changes that we can support. That said, it's, it's really unfortunate that we don't have... I mean, I'm going to be honest, I'm nervous about, and I'm not Joe. I don't know, Joe's not with us tonight, but I'm not Joe. And I'm nervous about the budgetary impact this pandemic is going to have on our district. Some of the changes that we have to implement are expensive, and that's with waivers in a lot of areas from the contract. And it's just too bad that, you know, we, we still haven't really seen any funding related to this. We're now talking about starting on the 14th, and the governor is pushing out poll starts for districts until October 14th. And sooner or later, we're going to be at the semester point. But instead of dwelling on that any further, I do want to mention one more thing. I am very grateful to Ken Townsend for not only the work he's been doing in the district around air quality and air exchange, but for also taking time today to give me a tour of two of the buildings, both Quinn and Green Bush. And just the things that our district is doing, you know, with the custodial maintenance department under Ken's supervision are very impressive. And I have somewhat of a familiarity with the concepts of H E, HBAC. But to see how they're actively modifying and retrofitting systems to completely evacuate stagnant air out of the building and hopefully with it, all of the COVID particles, is very impressive. And it makes me more confident, because I've already been honest with Karen, with school committee members and with my members, that, I should say, our members, that if I don't feel like there's, you know, true effort in that it's safe, I'm going to be the first one to say it. And the work that's been done in the district just to make it as safe as possible, knowing full well, no one can promise everybody that no one will ever get sick. I just, I'm very grateful to see that happen. So thank you to everybody involved in that process.
Great, thank you, Sean.
All right, I think that's pretty much it. That's what's on the agenda. Again, thank you, everyone, tonight, appreciate it. And can I just get a motion for Jordan, please?
So moved.
Okay, Joe and then Reni, thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone, be safe, have a good night. Sorry, all in favor? Thank you, Aubrey.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.